Welcome to the Village of Tocco Planning Board meeting. Today is October 20th, 2020.
So move for his minutes.
No, no, attendance first.
Yes, Commissioner Narenberg.
President.
Commissioner Barra.
President.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Chairman Leo.
Okay, on the agenda this evening, we have several items. It's the approval of the meeting minutes held September 15th, 2020. 9 Main Street, which I believe is not here this evening. 22 Underhill, that was also, I don't believe it's here. You have 125 Marble Road, 160 Dante Avenue, 72 Marble Dale Road, 77-72 Marble Dale Road, which is a subdivision. And then 174 Marble Dale and 181 Marble. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to welcome the new member of the planning board. She, her name is Susanna Carpenter. She's a long-term resident of Tocco and I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome her to the planning board and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
This evening, so it looks like we're missing two commissioners. So at this point, Susanna will be a voting member of the planning board. She does have all the documentation and I believe has reviewed the documentation and she will participate in this evening's applications. At this point, can we have 160 Dante Avenue?
Didn't forget your minutes.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, yes, yes. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Minutes of September 15th. Hey, have a second, please?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. At this point, we'll have 160 Dante Avenue.
Yes, Scott, good evening, Chair members of the board. Louis Campad, architect for 160 Dante Avenue. I just want to confirm one thing, do we have a quorum tonight?
Yes.
We do, okay. Sorry, I was unsure. Welcome, new board member, Carpenter.
Hey Louis, if you could wait one sec, we have one other member joining us right now. Another member. We have Nancy. And Nancy, for that, for the minutes, Susanna would have abstained from that.
I have three to zero.
Right.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. So we are before you, we were before you last month, but here again for site plan review for an existing non-conforming three-family dwelling within the A5 zone, which in fact is a single-family zone. And what we propose to do is install or construct a roof terrace over an existing footprint first floor towards the rear of the house. And we're doing this for two reasons. One is to give the residents of the second floor access to the rear yard and also to enhance egress for the purposes of life safety. Is there any questions?
Can you walk us through your application, Louis?
Sure, I'm just going to share my screen. Okay, so can you all see that?
Yeah, you might want to expand your screen.
Okay, so this is, this is the site plan here, okay? And this is Dante Avenue. This right here is the existing residence. And the area which is hatched is the area where we're proposing a roof terrace, which is over existing first floor footprint. Okay. Currently, the residents on the second floor have to walk down three flights of stairs down to the main entrance and then back around the house up these steps here to the rear yard. So we're proposing this so they have direct access to the rear yard. Go to the elevation. So here is the rear elevation. Currently, there's a shed roof in this area. We're going to be removing the shed roof and then replacing that with new framing, a new decking surface with waterproofing and then this guard rail and a step here to access the rear yard. That's pretty much it.
As far as building materials, you use a couple of materials that are on the property?
So what we're proposing to do here is use PVC material for maintenance purposes. The decking surface will be track stacking, same thing with the railing material. The railing will be white, the decking will be a colored surface. And then the step here would be masonry.
And Louis, on the platform, the rear yard, what's the home on the, if you look at your elevation, the proposed side elevation, what is the closest home in that backyard?
The closest home?
Yeah, is there a home directly behind us?
Actually, there, let's go back to the site plan. There's a retaining wall in the rear yard, which is on the neighbor's property right here. It's about five and a half, six feet tall. And then, as you can see, the grade on the side elevation, it starts very low on Dante Avenue. And as you go back up, you know, up towards the rear, there's a substantial increase in elevation.
Right, okay.
Another reason for implementing this roof terrace for ease of access.
Right. I don't have any questions. Does anyone from the board have any questions on this application?
No, not here.
No, nothing here.
Mr. Chair, this applicant appeared before the zoning board. What happens is this is a non-conforming house and since they were increasing a non-conformity, they needed a variance. And last ZBA meeting, that variance was granted.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, since no one from the board has any point, I make a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second, please? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak on this application? Gary, is anyone in the room?
No, I don't see anybody. But I don't know.
All right. So since there's the one present, at this point, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
So at this point, I'd like to read a resolution. The Village of Tocco, 65 Main Street, New York, 10707, Planning Board Resolution/Decision. Applicant, John, I apologize for putting your name, Omar. Located, project is 160 Dante Avenue, Tocco, Section 38, Block 5, Lot 101. Description, project applicant is seeking to construct a rooftop terrace in the rear yard. The following is the Resolution/Decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tocco, New York. The applicant is the owner of 160 Dante Avenue in Tocco. Applicant is seeking to construct a roof terrace over the first floor footprint. The roof terrace will provide to, will provide the second floor dwelling unit access to the terrace and rear yard. The improvements will enhance the look of the yard, which is, which is fair, defined based on the work session and presentation at the public hearing that the applicant has met the burden of 7-1 of the Village of Tocco zoning code and therefore the application is approved. Every representation of the applicant made in its application, a presentation will be a condition of disapproval. Any deviation from the representation made shall be cause for revocation of second. Have a second, please? Nancy, please take role.
Yes. Commissioner Narenberg?
Or?
Commissioner Barra?
For.
Commissioner Height-Norday?
For.
Commissioner Carpenter?
For.
And Chairman Leo.
All right, so congratulations and good luck with construction.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time and enjoy the rest of the evening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Take care.
At this point, can we, I guess we'll be a subdivision first, right Gary?
Yeah, that's what you choose, Mr. Chair.
I guess we need the subdivision first and then we can look at the other application, correct? Because one is contingent on the other.
One is dependent on the other, that's, yeah, that's fine. And both need variances. So you can't technically open the public hearing on either of these applications because you do not have a complete application yet. So they can informally present to you. Once they get their variances, then you can open the public hearing and move forward on your end.
So at this point, can we have 70-72 Marble Dale subdivision?
Yes, we are here and we've had some modified drawings, which I know we sent a little late today. But we had some conversations and can improve this. I'll let Steve move on with this, but a couple of the changes, I just want to go over very quickly with you. Let's share the screen.
Mr. Brandeis, can we just start from the beginning since the workshop and the community has not had the opportunity to review that? So if you could start from the beginning, we can go from there.
Steve, did you want to?
Yeah, yeah, yes. I'll introduce the project and then I'll turn it over to you. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Accinelli from Veneroso Curdo, Schwartz &amp; Curdo on behalf of the applicant relative to the subdivision application. That's Compass One LLC. As we had discussed at the workshop, this, this project is something that has been under consideration by the applicant for some time. And by way, brief background, we've had a number of meetings with Mr. Williams from the Building Department to talk about ways to kind of structure the intent, design characteristics regarding the, this project as a whole, which relates to the 70 Marble Dale piece, Pause &amp; Play, which we'll get to separately. But, so we're here today with the current application. And as the board is aware, the 70-72 property essentially consists of one very long building. And that was the site of the former Richards Conditioning Business. And about nine or so years ago, a portion of that building was renovated, within which Pause &amp; Play has been operating its business since that time. And the balance heading north of that building has remained vacant. What the applicant would like to do is proceed with the subdivision of the property, which would create a proposed Lot 1 and 2. The current property is approximately 40,000 square feet. Following the subdivision, proposed Lot 1 will be about 15,500 square feet. That's the northerly lot. And the proposed Lot Number 2, southerly lot, where the Pause &amp; Play operates, will be approximately 24,000 square feet. The intention here is, connection with the subdivision, the about 9,000 square feet of the unused portion of the currently vacant building will be demolished. And the northerly Lot 1 will be rendered a vacant lot. And the Lot 2 will result in an expanded business operation for the Pause &amp; Play business, which has been there. And the Pause &amp; Play business will continue with the same use and occupancy that it has again for the past nine or so years. And again, this will result in the removal, elimination of a longstanding dilapidated structure, considered an eyesore and obviously create the opportunity for development and further improvements to the site that I think the board will be happy, will be consistent with the Marble Dale Road design guidelines. And the expansion of the Pause &amp; Play business will also be consistent with the Marble Dale Road decision guidelines in terms of relative to the Pause &amp; Play, improving an existing successful business. And relative to Lot 1, the elimination of a long vacant and dilapidated structure. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to turn it over to the architect Leonard Brandeis, who can talk about the design elements of the project. And following up on the workshop, I did have the opportunity to speak with the village's outside consultant, BFJ, Mr. Levine. And we talked about some revisions in response to the planning board's concerns about the parking. Whereas the application, you will recall, had originally proposed six tandem parking spaces located to the north of what will be the remaining Pause &amp; Play as expanded business and the southerly property line to Lot 1. Well, the design change resulted in the elimination of the tandem parking completely and the creation of a parallel parking scenario, as you can see, that would accommodate four vehicles with a buffer to the north of the parking spaces and the, and an aisle, and then a 12-foot aisle width between the building and the parking spaces. The, compared to the original proposal, the resulting revision results in the elimination of two proposed parking spaces that we had proposed originally. But, but it's the applicant's position that the current parking is and has always been, quite frankly, underutilized essentially from day one. I happen to travel that route very often on my way home from work. And it's typical for the parking that exists in the front to be empty, one or two cars. And at the end of the day, pursuant to the subdivision, there will be a net gain, even if we, even after we've eliminated the two of the proposed six, there will be a net gain for the Pause &amp; Play operation of two parking spaces, which we believe will be more than sufficient to accommodate the expanded Pause &amp; Play operation. It's also worth pointing out, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that while not overly persuasive relative to the application, the on-street parking, which is currently short-term metered, is essentially vacant pretty much all day, every day, as far as I can tell. And after discussions with the applicant, it's basically unused from the Pause &amp; Play up to the Jackson Avenue intersection. So it's our position that while we had originally proposed to add six tandem, the reduction four to four on a parallel basis will not have any adverse impact on the parking utilization situation at the property. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Len Brandeis to talk more about the design elements of the project.
Thank you. So as we're doing the expansion for Pause &amp; Play, we are going to be adding additional areas with kennels that we can use for the dogs. There'll be about 40 more kennels there. We are getting a lot of use right now. It's not so much kennels, a lot right now is training. So it does vary with the season, does vary with the situation. Right now, COVID has changed our use right now to a lot of training versus a lot of storing of dogs, you know, holding back of dogs. What we're talking about with the parking area is that we originally had a 20-foot setback over here with no buffer zone. And after our meeting, we decided to add a five-foot buffer zone. So now it's a 25-foot setback to the building with the five, with the five-foot buffer and park it on this side. And a question came as to why we're parking on this side as opposed to this side by the building? One, we have door and entrance to the building itself. I don't want that to be blocked. And the other is that when people back up and park, I would need some sort of curb at least three feet away from the building. So the back of the cars, as they go in, wouldn't be hitting the building. So keeping it on this side, I'm able to maintain that safety over there and maintain the exit. And that was the reasoning for that.
Hey, hey Len?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but why don't you just run through quickly the alternatives that were considered relative to the rear of the building? And why that those alternatives were not feasible under the circumstances?
Good point. So one of the issues that we had is the back of the building right here has huge rock outcroppings. I originally had, wanted to get a turnaround in here because I thought it would be a lot safer. I can get another parking spot and a turnaround. Works fine on paper, but once you actually go out there, which we did, there was no room to be able to take this stone down. There is a flat parking spot behind this part of the building, which is another property. But this whole area on this section here is all stone and it's all retaining wall compared to the parking lot over here. So we really, the cost would be astronomical to have for adding additional parking and turning around over here. So that was one of the issues we had. The plan operation, I'm going to bring this up a little bit more, is to move the, is to keep the kennel area in one side. Right now, this is a play area, there are training areas, I believe. Let the owners give a little more, Matt Solletti is here, he will fill us in a little bit more on the operation. But we decided to keep that now as additional kennels over here and create this new section that we have with the new part of the building would be all for training areas here. We have a lot more space than we used to have before. We feel we can accommodate the dogs, our clients, a lot better this way. So they have a lot more training areas, a lot more open space. Our plan is to have an open roofed area over here with a canopy that can be closed. So we can have a lot of fresh air coming into this space. And the, it's a kind of open section here. That once again, the back of the property over here, we have a small deck that we have on the site plan. But this area up here is almost unusable for us. It would just take so much money just to try to level it out, bring machinery, equipment in there. It just doesn't pay. So being able to create our training areas, large training areas, much larger than the original. You can see the original training area here. It's much larger and much easier access and control over here. We want to create an elevation that's similar to the Pause &amp; Play that we have now. This is the existing building. It's in, I guess the drawing actually makes it look a lot better than it actually is. It's really falling apart and we can show the photographs in a minute. But right now, we just want to have this section. There'll be an awning over here to match the awning from Pause &amp; Play. This area will be stuccoed over. Right now, this is concrete block, it's painted white. And the back side of this building over here, where the new section would be coming in over here on the side, would also be block wall with just an entrance over here. We originally had windows in the last presentation, but we don't really need the windows there at this point. I feel that's not necessary. I'd like to bring up the photographs. Can everybody see the photos?
Hey Len?
Yes.
Can we talk about the subdivision? You're combining the two applications.
Certainly. Go back to the plan?
Yeah, so let's focus on the subdivision first and then we can focus on the Pause &amp; Play applicant.
Sure.
Because without the subdivision, there's no Pause &amp; Play.
Well, I think the photos have helped us to put us in place. I think just to go through them and see where everybody is and understand the condition of the building and what we're planning on doing. I could show where the subdivision is coming over here and how we're going to separate the two spaces. So this is a Pause &amp; Play right now. This is the area that we're looking to take over. And it is in extremely bad shape. We'd be adding trim, we'd be re-stuccoing the whole space and putting new windows in. We want, once again, to match the existing. We'll come right back to the subdivision. But here is the main building that we have and it's in very bad shape on the corner there. But once we get this to look more like the building here, I think it's going to be a real improvement to the block and the area. This is across the street. This is next door. Once again, across the street and up to the hotel. Once again, falling apart, block everywhere. And this is the corner that we're talking about to open up. This is the town property, a new park area was sort of put here. I guess by, required by the hotel to have this. That's the entry into the lot that's being used now for parking. And that's part of the area that we're talking about using for, as part of that subdivision. This is the area on Jackson Avenue, looking down over the building. Because this is raised up about 15 feet in some areas over here.
Hey Lenny, I hate the, Lenny, is that large garage door staying or going?
Which, the one on the front?
Yes.
We were planning on keeping that large garage door in the front of the building. Go back to the elevations. You're referring to this store here?
Yes.
Yes, we were keeping that door. It'll get painted, so it matches in. We'll keep it in better shape, obviously, than what it is now. But that's, we're not in that area right now. That's part of the building that's going to get renovated. So I will.
Hey Len?
Yes.
My dad did the original plumbing in there when it was Eastern Metal Products.
It's a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
So subdivision-wise, we'll be taking the building down from our, from the setback and the subdivision would be sitting here. The, I'm going to go to the second lot information here. So we have it over here, what the lot size is going to be and what we can build there. I'm going to make this big so everybody can see it on the screens, I hope. So in terms of the lot size, we'll end up with 14,870. We reduced this lot a little bit from what Steve had because we added that extra five-foot strip of buffer zone. Maximum building coverage would be 10%, 70%. It's 10,409 square feet. Maximum floor ratio at 1.6 is 23,792 square feet. Height of 50 feet. So this still has a lot of room in that to work. It's not an unusable lot. It's certainly a developable lot. So we're not creating something that's not going to be usable. There's certainly left room. I'm showing the setback lines here all around. So we have our setbacks, the fronts, the side and the rear yard. And I think a building can certainly fit in here. We can easily put in probably about 5,000 square feet. It's a matter of how you want to work the parking, whether the parking would be outside, which would be tight on this lot because it's been tight on that lot. Or if we can add some parking that's within a garage under the building or at grade to the building. And that's another story when we, when somebody comes to present for that case. And they want to ask some questions on the subdivision, so.
Yeah, first of all, we don't have this drawing. I have a drawing that was sent earlier in the week.
These were submitted earlier today, late in the afternoon. I know that you don't have the file on that. And that's why we're doing a presentation. We felt it was necessary for you to see this to help understand it and go through it. From your comments, we wanted to work out something that made sense for everybody.
Okay. All right, so let's talk about the subdivision. We'll look at, we'll look at the parking. Currently, you're in front of zoning, correct?
Correct.
And zoning will need to approve the subdivision, Gary?
No, the barriers before the zoning board relates to the expansion, to the subdivision application, but they relate to three pre-existing non-conforming setback violations, Mr. Chairman. The front side and rear, pre-existing non-conforming. We're not proposing any work to the southerly, southern end of the property of the building. We're not, we're not proposing any expansion to the footprint whatsoever. So whatever footprint is there, existing, is going to remain. And we're just eliminating building structures. We're not creating any additional coverage.
Okay.
That's correct, Antonio.
Okay. And I also want to make sure that you guys have received a copy of the Life Master Plan on Marble.
Yes, we have reviewed that, as I've reviewed it.
And I just want to get an understanding of how are you kind of complying with what the the master plan is looking for as we start to develop these projects on Marble Dale?
Well, I think, I mean, Len can jump in here as well, but I think a couple of things. Number one, we are eliminating an existing dilapidated structure that's an eyesore to the community. That is something that's been long complained about by the village. Part and parcel of that will be the improvement of that adjacent sidewalk in connection with whatever the future development is of that site. So it's basically eliminating an undesirable condition, creating an opportunity for a consistent condition development pursuant to the. for a consistent condition development pursuant to the Marble Dell, uh, design guidelines. You know, where, where, you know, this is not a new development. Um, this is, uh, this certainly is going to also foster an existing business without any associated detrimental impact or nuisance conditions uh, that go along with some businesses that could certainly be operating there. Uh, there are no environmental impacts. Um, and again, I think the, the parking, uh, situation, which we've touched on a, a little bit and I mentioned a little bit earlier. I don't think we're gonna be adding any, um, congestion or creating any hazardous conditions relative to, um, traffic or traffic flow, parking flow as it relates to pause and play. Again, I, I can't speak too much, uh, as it relates to the, to the vacant, unimproved parcel that will result from this application. But I think, um, it certainly eliminates, like I said, the eyesore and creates an opportunity for the development and that development will have to be presented certainly to the planning board and possibly to the zoning board going forward. I don't know if, Len, you've got anything that you wanna add that maybe I missed?
Well, I think the fact that we are, you know, eliminating this whole front of the building, which is almost on the property line right now, uh, eliminating that, that gives you a more open space, which is what you're trying to do with Marble Dell Road. Uh, adding the buffer zone between buildings that will be here. I, I think also it adds to what we're trying to do. I mean, most of the guidelines that I read about were more about streetscapes in terms of lamp posts and sidewalks. Uh, it wasn't that much, once again, it's guidelines, it wasn't definitely directives, uh, from what I saw. Uh, but we are certainly improving the building, improving the look, uh, and, you know, enhancing the property, the whole streetscape by eliminating that. This is part of the building, which is a, a real eyesore. And right on the property line, the next building will be, have to be setback. Uh, of course, they can go for variances, but it's up to the zoning board on that. Uh, but right now, you know, we're saying we can set up a building. We can do something within code without any issues, without any variances required. It could make a beautiful space. So I think it is an enhancement to the area.
Right, and in the spirit of the, uh, of the, um, master plan, uh, the idea of the, improving the streetscape and all the other functions you talked about that, and from what I see here, uh, the only thing you're doing is you're reducing half of, but you're eliminating half of a building, existing building and, uh, painting, uh, the other half. Has to plug and play. Am I missing something? With, uh, with the exception of adding what looks like some, some shrubs, uh, going...
You know, we are adding new windows. We are gonna paint it. We are gonna put awnings on top of the building as we showed in the elevations that we have. Uh, I think it is becoming, you know, a new stucco finish on this. I think there is a bit improvement, but on the other hand, this is, once again, it's an existing building and we are removing the worst part of the building, which is an eyesore, which has obviously been built up by several different buildings in the past. Uh, it's not just one building that's there. And by eliminating that and giving us a, a main corner of the property, I think that really does make an improvement to the, uh, area and to the concept of the master plan.
Yeah, I think I'd like you to look at that a little further. Um, so, and the other couple of things I wanna talk about is, so now you're gonna take down that, gotta take out the building in lot one. What, what is that gonna look like for the next period of time, uh, until someone, you know, uh, does something on the property? You know, so in other words, you're taking the building down, you're gonna fill up the hole and then, you know, I'm sure you're gonna put some sort of a, uh, construction fence along the perimeter and we're gonna have to, eyesore for, until you develop that site.
No, we're not gonna have an eyesore. We're going to certainly, we're not gonna leave just a big, uh, open hole over there. Certainly we'll have, you know, we'll probably seed it until it gets, uh, rounds over here. We aren't gonna leave it as an open hole. We are gonna have, it's gonna be private, so there will probably be a fence around it to keep people from going in there. We're not turning it into a public park at this time. Uh, but certainly, we're not gonna leave it as a, a vacant, empty hole in the grounds. We will put some, uh, plantings, things like that, so it does look good for now. We're not gonna leave it.
I think, I think...
It is a major corner of the Marble Dell.
Yeah, I mean, it's, our, our client has an existing business immediately adjacent and they still own it. And they've been a, they've been a very responsible operator in the village. They will maintain that property in a safe, clean, um, manner that's consistent with whatever, um, the building department and the village codes require. I mean, we will do, uh, anything and everything that's required from the building department um, or, and or as a condition to this approval, to make sure that that vacant area is maintained in a safe, appropriate manner.
Uh, the point of my comment though is I'd like to see a plan in place of what's being proposed to, to, uh, how that lot is gonna be maintained.
Okay, it's like a maintenance that we're going to be putting seating. We'll take out the driveway here, things like that.
I don't know what you're doing. I need to understand how the lot will be left after you demolish everything. Because the reality is...
Understand.
Nothing's going to be developed until whatever period of time it's going to be. And I just don't need another eyesore on that particular, uh, road.
Understood.
Alright, so I'd like to understand what's going on there.
Okay.
Alright, and then, uh, you mentioned earlier that the garage door is staying, but in plan, it looks like you're making offices or windows, which is it?
Uh, the garage door is staying. The office and windows on the other side, that's existing, I believe. I'll look at the plan, make sure I got that. But we're taking that, we have that in the plan, didn't we? I'll have to take a look at that, I'll confirm.
Yeah, because right now, your, your plan is showing, uh, removal of that door, putting a new, uh, doorway into, uh, Matt's office, um, and a couple of windows adjacent to it.
Actually, let me see where that is.
Right front, right there.
We have that, no, actually, you're right, we did do that, but... Yeah, the garage, I'm sorry, the garage doors we're referring to is actually this one over here on the side.
Okay, but your elevation...
That garage door does have to come out. You're right, I have to fix the drawing on that one.
Alright, so, so what I'd like to...
I'll get to that.
And what I'd like is at the, uh, for the next, uh, before the next meeting or before the, the workshop, they'll take your plans and we submit to the, to the board, please.
Okay, no problem.
Alright.
One quick question, uh, this is Noah Levine, uh, from Beadre Planning. Um, Steve, when I spoke to you, I mentioned, um, that I, I was under the impression that lot one, the kind of lot that's proposed to be, uh, demolished, is actually two separate lots. Did you look into that?
I, I, I haven't had a chance to, um, look into that, Noah. You know, it's, it is lot one. Um, both pieces are, so it's one section, block and lot. I haven't, I haven't had a chance to figure out what that T or that E means, but it, and I'll do that. I just have not had a chance to do it.
Steve, I haven't looked into it, I can tell you what it is. That line is the boundary between the two school districts, Takahaw and Eastchester.
Oh, so that, okay, so some, so for our, from our perspective, then it's not an issue because it's all part of lot one, which we own and part of this application?
Just verify that with your survey, but what I could see and the research I did, it looks like it's a boundary line between these two school districts.
Right, I was gonna, I was gonna check the, uh, after I'd spoke to Mr. Levine yesterday, I was gonna check the deeds. I just didn't get around to it, um, today, but I'll do that.
So there are, it is on... Okay, I would explain it though, thanks Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Noah, I, I, have you been taken for this project yet?
Uh, we haven't received official confirmation yet. It sounds like from Bill, um, that's, I guess, eminent.
Okay.
Oh, I thought Mary Ann sent something out on Friday to you.
Yeah, she did. I just need an official confirmation. I think she was kind of waiting to talk to you about that. So I just need an email confirmation.
I'll get an email out to you first thing in the morning.
Great, thank you, Bill.
Alright.
Yeah, we've, we've been operating under the assumption that this would be moving forward, so...
What, I'm sorry?
I just said we've been operating under the assumption that this would be moving forward. So I've had an opportunity to look at the plans.
Okay, uh, and you, I guess you've worked with the applicant on the parking? Is that what I heard earlier, or was that mistaken?
Uh, yeah, Steve called me just to ask, um, you know, just, just my opinion on, um, the six tandem parking spaces, which was previously proposed versus the idea of a four parallel spa, you know, for the four parallel spaces. And, uh, my impression was that that made, you know, made a little bit more sense. Uh, the tandem spaces, uh, seem to me to be a little bit wonky, particularly, you know, if you've been in emergency situation. Um, if the car that needs, you know, that's furthest in, needs to get out, then you have two cars backing out. So this seemed to, to make more sense from a, uh, circulation standpoint. Um, the question remained whether, um, you know, this would satisfy the, you know, the parking demand, but it's my impression that utilization has been low. And, and I think I was gonna discuss that with you, uh, at this meeting, what, you know, what your impression was. Uh, obviously, the parking demand would be set by the planning board. So, um, there's no real set number on that, you know, as far as spaces per square foot or, you know...
Yes, totally understand. Uh, we, we, during our work session, we expressed our concern about the six tandem parking spaces. We didn't think that was workable. Uh, and, and the concern that I have here as well is, you know, at this point, uh, where, uh, the building, uh, sidewalk for the building is only about five feet, uh, five feet wide.
Right.
Um, and so it's a very narrow sidewalk. I walk Marble Dell on a regular basis and, you know, it's, it's kind of a pinch point over there.
We're seven feet, I can measure that, actually.
Sorry?
We're seven feet wide over here at this point. I measured that myself last week.
You think seventeen feet?
Seven feet.
Seven.
Seven feet across the sidewalk.
Alright, so, so it feels narrow to me, uh, Noah. Um, but the other concern that I have is the cars so have, uh, uh, of this tandem situation here. And I walk the car back, backing out onto Marble Dell, uh, in a direction to travel. Um, seems, I don't know, a little precarious to me as well.
Okay.
And then I have some concerns with, uh, you know, left hardscape. For example, you know, uh, I see, uh, proposing a, a five foot buffer, uh, to the left of the parked cars, which is a shock, you know, to soften up the, the, the hardscapes. Uh, but again, I don't know what, since we don't know what's happening on lot one, you know, um, again, I, I just don't want it to be like a little script of nothing that was not gonna get, not going to be taken care of. And, uh, so I have reservations slash concerns about that. And then also, you know, thinking about the streetscape as well, there's no cause at this point to do anything with this, uh, streetscape whatsoever. So those are, uh, personal concerns. I'm, I'm not sure i- if anyone else from the board, uh, has any other concerns or, or, you know, uh, issues on this particular project. Dave, you have any comments?
Uh, I'm in line with what you're saying, Antonio. I, uh, you know, I just questioned how that retaining well, wall's gonna work out. Because there is a big drop there and, uh, but to your note, I, I totally agree with it.
Right, uh, and the other, uh, I have, it's more to do with the pause and play application. And I think you mentioned at the last meeting that you're going to have forty-one additional kennels. And I recognize that the majority of that will take place during the major holidays when people are away and wanna board their dogs. Uh, so my question is, where is the, um, um, uh, garbage, uh, container going to be located on this particular site? Uh, I know you'll have, you know, more dogs.
It is all the way to the right right now, uh...
Where is that?
So I can get that in the drawing. It's actually in the area over here. I, I will note it on the drawing for you, but that's already been like that. It's approved from the last applications when the pause and play first came in.
Right, no, my, my question is not, uh, uh, you know, yes, it's, it's fine where it is, but, uh, since you want to have potentially forty more, uh, dogs, cats, whatever, uh, you know, is that the adequate size for that condition?
Fucking funny.
Alright.
It, it's definitely enough, we never fill the dumpster up. The only time we fill the dumpster up is when we were cleaning out the lot next door.
Okay. Are your dogs on that lot too?
No. No, they were just cleaning out, cleaning out junk from the building.
Got it, okay. Alright, um...
Antonio, can I add one, uh, just one comment?
Yeah.
Um, I think, um, you know, just to get a sense of the, the parking demand for the facility, it would be helpful to get a sense of what the anticipated, you know, peak, um, kind of, um, peak, peak demand is gonna be. Um, my understanding is that it's, appointments are scheduled, so people will come and go, kind of similar to the learning experience where, um, you know, while you might have a lot of dogs there at any given time, people are only gonna be there for a short period of time. But it would be helpful to get some kind of a table showing what that peak, what that peak period is.
Okay.
And, and just so you know, those, uh, forty additional enclosures, those are for the, the people that wanna drop their dogs off while they go on vacation and have them trained.
Or you're...
We schedule, we schedule, um, their drop off and pickup times over the course of the whole deck. So twelve hour deck. So you're spreading out, you know, a forty additional over twelve hours.
Yeah, no, I guess what, I guess what I'm saying is, it sounds like it, it, it could work, but you should just show the data, just so we have it.
Of course.
Uh, and the other thing is just staffing wise, since you're increasing the size of your facility, nothing doubling it, right? Uh, you know, how many additional staff would, uh, have?
Yeah, it really doesn't, it, it affects it a little bit, not that much. We would anticipate adding one to two more employees per shift.
Per shift, okay.
Only in our peak time, which is like ten percent of the year.
Yeah, okay. Alright, no, I mean, I, I pass that your facility on a regular basis. I see the parking lot, you know, empty the majority of the time, one or two cars in there. I've never seen it where it's, uh, overflown. Like Noah said, perhaps it's, you know, early in the morning or late in the evening, when potentially when everyone coming home and picking up their, uh, their dogs. Uh, but just, it'd be interesting to know what those peak periods are so that, you know, we can have a better understanding of your facility and how it works.
Sure, of course.
Um, and, and Antonio, and I share your, your reservations about the project. You know, the sidewalks are pretty narrow. Um, you know, I guess it's, you know, the, the silver lining is that, you know, as, as the applicant has mentioned, in the future, at least half of that property could have a wider setback. Um, and, and hopefully, uh, they'll incorporate some landscaping in that area. So it'll just be a short, you know, a short little span where they're adapt, uh, adaptively reusing that building.
Unfortunately, it's the entire pause and play building now. So if you look at the pause and play building itself, the existing, taking over, there's nothing, uh, at stretch. Yes, it, the tight section of sidewalk is only, I don't know, maybe forty feet, fifty feet, whatever that frontage is, right? Uh, but, uh, if you look, if you go from the right property line to the, uh, potential left property line, you know, it's just gonna be where, what it is, um, yeah, there's nothing happening there. It's gonna, you know, cause that's all existing, nothing, no work in the plan there.
Correct, correct. You're right, you're right, you're right, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it, it is, you know, we're not proposing any, any work there. It's already existing conditions, but, um, but like, like I mentioned, we're, we're happy to report that we are taking, you know, proactive steps to eliminate, you know, something that's been sitting there vacant for extended period of times and eliminating, doing as much as we can under the circumstances to improve the conditions, um, of the balance of the property, anyway.
Right, and, and the other question I have, I, I stopped by the building last week and I noticed it's a, a large, uh, looks like an eight inch diameter pipe coming from the roof in that corner to the left, uh, uh, left side, uh, and parking. What, that from the, what is?
That will come out. That will be coming out.
What is that, roof drain?
Yes, roof drains.
Alright. That should go away, it shouldn't be dumping in the other street.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anybody else have any questions?
I'm here.
Good.
Uh, Dan, Dana?
No, I don't have any questions. Um, everything was kinda answered as we were going through the whole presentation.
Alright, um, so it's at this point, this, this building, correct, uh, Gary?
Mr. Chairman, you cut out, Mr. Chairman. This is a presentation, it was informal, you can't open the public hearing. I don't think anyone from the public's here if they had any comments. I don't see anybody else in the room. So you get out of this, can you put us back to where we were, Lenny, without sharing the screen? Yeah, I don't see anyone else here, Antonio.
At this point, that's with information purposes of the presentation. The, um, they'll have to go in front of zoning, get the approval and then come back, right?
Right.
But in the meantime, uh, Mr. Brian Dice, uh, please, uh, submit updated drawings. Uh, Noah, uh, we, we, I'd like to go out, have a conversation to go over this and...
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, so at this point...
And I'll be attending the zoning board meeting as well, so I can relay their, their comments to you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so at this point, uh, seven, seventy Marble, uh, Marble Dell are done, right?
Yes, thank you.
Alright guys, thank you.
Mr. Ch, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, we're done with, with both seventy and seventy and seventy-two? I just, you cut out, I didn't hear you.
Yes, we're done with both since Lenny combined the two.
Okay.
Unless anybody, anybody else, any questions on seventy-two?
No.
No. No.
Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, at this point, one seventy-four Marble Dell.
I'm just setting up between. Good evening, members of the board. We're looking at, you know, we've had a conversation last time at the work session, we did make some changes. And also some renderings, I don't know if you received all the renderings, but we did update the renderings today as well. Uh, the purpose of this, I'm gonna go back to the photos. Share the screen in a second.
I'll just answer your initial question, though, we have not received revised application.
I will update everything. You'll have everything updated. Okay. Everybody get back online, okay? Uh, this is the existing building at one seventy-four Marble Dell. It was a restaurant of many different types. Uh, it is in extremely bad condition and the property is an unusual property with a very steep hill behind. Uh, we're still waiting for the final topo surveys, and we will have that for the next meeting before that. Our surveyor promises us that. He did also mention, by the way, that the difference in street level from this street to the street above is approximately sixty feet. So that our building, I, I thought it was, I thought it was about forty-five when I checked on, uh, Google Earth, but he's telling me sixty from curb to curb. Uh, he will get us exact dimensions for that, so we'll have that app with information, because I know we do need that. Uh, the building itself that we're doing, the main building itself, the roof is at forty feet high. And that the, so we don't plan on going up, uh, taller than that. Uh, the building next door, we have a parking lot, and you can see the hill going up here with the trees, it's very steep. So you don't have full use of this property. You can see the existing building right, uh, next door neighbor.
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Good, I'm going home.
Okay, I gotta go.
Alright.
Gary, can you, uh?
He's muted, okay. Uh, so we're going up, you can see the hill does go up, even the next door neighbor goes up, and then it goes up pretty high to this level here. Across the street, we have other buildings that we're hoping we're gonna be ha- looking for one behind this building. We'll talk about that next. Uh, up the road, this is looking north, over there is one residential section over here, residential area, but most of this is commercial right now. And the purpose of what we want to do is to develop this property in a way to hopefully enhance the neighborhood a bit, and also to enhance our use of the, uh, area itself. We do have a lot of equipment. This is for the lead construction and they have a lot of equipment that they'd like to keep indoors and off the streets and off the highway, so you don't see it. Uh, they also wanna have offices on the second floor. So our proposal is to put in a new building now, and going to, uh, bring that in next. So we'll start with the plan-wise, and then we'll go to the renderings. So in plan, uh, we are before the zoning board, we went before them, had a, a first meeting with them last week. The plan itself is looking for the area here where we can use the spots, so the main area will be in here for the truck storage. We have very little area here. We're not looking for variances on setbacks in the rear, but we're all looking for variances on side, because we have very tight space here to use. Uh, the main floor area, we're looking at having a lobby center. This is on Marble Dell Road with a parking lot that would be underneath. Uh, I know there have been some objections made by Mr. Leo on terms of having covered parking. But in this case, the covered parking is over an area that's fourteen-foot-high ceiling. So it's not a covered parking that's in an eight-foot-high area, which is what you normally see in buildings. So we hope the, the renderings will help see what we're using material-wise and what the building's doing. The main entrance for trucks would be here and another truck entrance here right now, so that all the storage would be here. And then the other two floors above, the second floor would be for a lead to move their offices, uh, from Lincoln to here, and also for uh, the second, the third floor is same will be rented area, that they will rent out the second floor. Elevation-wise, we're looking for materials that we feel that would work well with the, the area. We have the two large garage doors, the entry lobby, and the parking areas. I think the renderings actually help see the building a lot better, and I think I'd like to just show that to you before.
While you leave this, right, I, I, I had asked for a section showing the, uh, the houses on, on the back right there.
I was waiting for the survey, which I don't have yet.
Okay.
Otherwise I'd be faking it, and I don't wanna fake the survey. My renderings to open up. So what we're looking at doing here is the entry, and we're planning on doing some street, streetscapes, which is what you are looking for in Marble Dell. That we would have some benches and some plantings along the parking area over here on both sides. Uh, this would be the entry for the new parking area. And material-wise is what we're looking at doing. Once again, we're talking about a fourteen-foot ceiling in here. This is not a tight underground parking area that's open. We want it as open as possible. Uh, the second floor for being offices and third floor for offices, or possibly industrial as well, uh, not like, like commercial. Uh, building next door is a brick building. Uh, it's also going all the way back. And just to give you more of a sense of where we are in terms of that, and that's what we're trying to keep bringing, the coloring, the rendering, the concept. Uh, this building, we don't know how long it's gonna be there. It could be there for five years, it could be there for, you know, fifty years. Uh, but we feel that we can create a nice building here that'll enhance the block, that will add some streetscape, put some lamps if we can out here as well, and, uh, improve the neighborhood at the same time. And I am open to questions.
So, I think probably, uh, from our workshop, that, uh, new renderings, thank you. Um, the old ones weren't great, um. Gary, can I share my screen for, uh, a second?
Well, Lenny, I think you have to get out and let.
I am, I'm doing that now. Okay, where would I get the video? It's not in here, so.
Is there an elevator planned for the building?
Excuse me?
Is there an elevator?
Yes, yes, there is an elevator planned for the building, yes, Frank.
Thank you.
Alright, so I happened to be on Central Avenue, uh, last.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I saw the new, the new TD and Barret trade building. To see, you know, it caught my attention and what I wondered about when we split, what, uh, discussed this at the workshop is, you know, um, the, so this building is the same situation, it's a small site. Uh, uh, it's not as deep as your site. But as you can see, this is literally one parking space. It's head-on parking. You know how dark it is? I know you think, uh, you know, it's literally one, uh, one parking there.
Uh, you'll also notice the height over there. We have basically an eight-foot wa- uh, door over here. So once again, the ceiling height is not very tall here. We're talking about fourteen-foot-high ceiling in our state.
Is, you know, your renderings are, are really showing, are really showing, you know, uh, the light point, you put it all the way in the back of your, uh, garage. If you go back to the rendering?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, where you shot the light from is back corner of the, back left-hand corner of the, uh, the rendering.
I need to share, hold on. I'm gonna get to share the screen.
Yeah, so go to the se- uh, the second one? No, no, yeah, that one.
Okay, we have, uh, twelve-foot-high door over here and two feet above it. And the scale, looking at a person, your cones were about this high over here that you were showing in that photograph. And we are much higher. That's, eight feet would be down here. So yes, a low ceiling would be dark. This is open on two sides, and we will certainly light it all, all day. If it's dark in that, no question about that. Certainly it won't be a dark area like the other one that you showed me with, uh, the TD Bank. It's not an eight-foot-high wall.
I, I get it. Well, what I'm saying, when you shot this rendering, wherever you shot this rendering, you put the light point in a back corner there, so the, the, uh, this view of this particular, um, um, uh, this particular view is not a true rendition of what it actually would look like when, uh, when this building is built. So you overlapped this back corner, uh, to, to provide a lot of light. So again, I still have reservations, uh, uh, about. About this type of building. Uh, I've expressed it to you, uh, at our workshop. But at the end of the day, it's the same building, so, uh, you have my concern, uh.
And that's why we will be lighting up that ceiling, uh, you know, it'll be, uh, day and night when it's being used. It will be lit up and it will light up the underside in here.
Yes, I, I get it. I'm not a fan of this architecture. I've explained that to you. So, uh, I'm hoping.
But we have, we have costs, you know, expenses of dealing, uh, with this and going in the back of the lot, uh, would be extremely expensive to, to lose all that property. If I reduce the size, I have no other place to put this building. Uh, to start building, you know, fifty-foot retaining walls is extremely expensive. And there are limits to what we can afford to spend. And I feel this is a fairly good, clean solution, an improvement to the streetscape by adding, you know, uh, areas where people can sit down, have buffer zones with some plantings in it over here and here. So we're hiding the parking and having a place for the street. Well, obviously, improve the sidewalks as we're over here as well. Uh, that's what we're planning on doing right here, because we want this to be a nice-looking building, and a nice entrance and, uh, peace to be part of, uh, Marble Dell as improvements moving along.
Yeah.
But it's just a matter of course to be able to take off, we'd, we'd have to lose half the building in order to put parking open. And I don't see the purpose. I mean, yeah, I couldn't, couldn't close it off completely, and I think that would be very dark in here, completely. I certainly wouldn't want to necessarily put walls. We looked at doing that actually before, uh, before we brought this, uh, rendering in, and I said, no, it just got too dark. It's really bad if you close this off. So having this as an open area, I think it's for safety and for light. I think it works fairly well.
Len, can I ask you a question? Um, I see, uh, two garage door openings, um, and I actually only see one curb cut in the rendering.
We missed that curb cut.
There'd be two curb cuts. Um, how would, how would that operate? Like, what kind of vehicles would be coming and going through the, through the garage doors?
Right, uh, through the garage doors, it would be mostly used from the, this garage door over here. And that garage door will be getting, uh, larger vehicles, mostly construction vehicles, uh, that's owned by a lead, so we'd be, those would be in, uh, in the evenings and coming out very early in the morning. So they wouldn't be as part of the necessary daytime traffic. Uh, but it is, uh, it'll be, you know, when they need these vehicles, so they will be coming through on both sides.
So do you need?
Most coming in.
Is there any way, would there be any way to consolidate and just have one curb cut for the whole facility?
In plan, the concern is that it's, it's not that wide of a space over here, you know, that we're, here we don't have that big of an area. It's a small lot. Uh, so being able to make the turn, so it's larger vehicles, are gonna be difficult, so we felt that having the two doors made it a lot easier to operate the building itself. Without any issues inside.
No, to answer your question, basic construction materials, construction equipment, the, uh, uh, backhoe, it's any trucks, it's any, um, heavy uh, construction, uh, equipment that, uh, uh, the contractor own.
Right. I mean, right now, we're not showing a full plan with any columns that may occur. We may have the, I'm gonna try to do this as open space most likely, where I can get beams going across the whole area, uh, but the construction vehicles will be fairly sizable. And we, you know, we're losing the corner here for the, uh, lobby with the staircase, and uh, we thought this was the best way to deal with it, that we can get some cars through here. Once again, those vehicles will be coming in and out off-hours. It wouldn't be on, you know, when the, if the office building would be open during normal hours. You know, they, they need to get out to do construction, and there's not gonna be a lot of this traffic on a daily basis. A lot of the vehicles are just stored here or repaired in here. So it's not gonna be on a daily basis with, you know, ten big trucks coming out of there. That's not gonna happen. It's not that big a facility.
Then I'm seeing, I'm seeing from this, um, diagram that, that the, one of the parking, um, spaces is basically in that five-foot setback over there.
Uh. Yes, that's, that is coming out. We have the city, the bench over here. It does show in the rendering, the bench over here and the bench over here.
I just wanted to point that out.
Yep.
You know, it, it feels, you know, just to me, um, just, I don't know if it's necessarily, um, kind of complies with the intent of the Marble Dell design guidelines. I think there was maybe, um, you know, obviously, it, it, they're just guidelines at this point. They were never adopted to zoning, um, and, and that's something I think the village will probably address at some point. But, um, I, I do think that there was a hope for a little bit more of a setback and have landscaping in the front.
We can probably, if, it's up to the planning board to determine what, how much parking we need, and if we can eliminate that parking space and add landscape over there, we would be very happy to do that. We would just try to get as many parking spots, you know, as possible for the public.
Yeah, I'm just making the point that it does feel a little bit sparse in the front, um.
By having the shrubs here and the shrubs here, we thought that would help, you know, organize, and over here, we can add additional. As I said, if we couldn't eliminate the one parking spot, we certainly can do that, and then we can create more of a park area over here, having a bench wrapped around maybe would be a little bit better and have a, a better seating area over here for that, that spot. I'd certainly be willing to do that.
Hey, Lenny, are, are there meter spots in front of this building? And if so, how many would you be taking away with your curb cuts?
Okay, let's go back to the photos. Uh, there is one over here and one over here, so actually, we'd probably be moving the other ones down here. There's no meters over here right now. It's all open. As you can see the photos, I'll see when you get another shot of that, so you can see it better. Let's see. Uh, yeah, this is all open. There's no meters here at all. Uh, the first meter is over here, so we would probably be able to add additional, probably two meters to this area, as opposed to eliminating meters.
How would you do that? That's for your partner.
I have parking now over here, so I can certainly put another parking spot over here. Here's one back here. I can put one over here. Doesn't exist now. Uh, so certainly over there, and then on the other side over here, I can add a couple of parking spaces on this side, on each side of the, uh, driveway. Right now, it's all open from, here's the first meter right here, and all the way back here is the next meter. Yep, that's the meter. Somehow in the middle of the sidewalk, but that's, that we'll talk about another time. I'd say we'd like to move the meters away from the middle of the sidewalk as part of the decorations of Marble Dell Road. And make the sidewalks more accessible. Actually, they, they did move those side, those meters, uh, to the middle of the other area on this side. And I saw a couple of people with baby stalls and they can't even get through there. So I guess we do need to discuss that, uh, for improvement for the roadway. Any other questions or?
Yeah, I have. I think I know what you've done.
In terms of. Yeah, the meters here. Here's, like, this meter over here, by the way, this is right across, and it's almost impossible for people to walk through this area over here. So things like that do need to be addressed, and certainly, we'll be replacing the sidewalk in front of the whole building and creating a nice sidewalk over here, and a nice entry way on, on property without any problem. So that'll certainly improve it, and we, there are no approved s- uh, streetlights yet, so we'd certainly like to do that. Uh, electric going to the building will probably be underground at this point. I think that's also part of the streetscape plan uh, that we have in Marble Dell Road to eliminate these overhead wires as much as possible. So all of that will be occurred as well, occur as well.
Lenny, can you put up the rendering, please?
Back to the rendering, sure. I have a little, uh, video, if you'd like to see a little video.
No.
Aw, come on.
You got a, a second to speak first or no?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure?
Yes, sir.
Uh, a- as I mentioned at, at our workshop, I, I'm concerned with this type of building. Um, you know, you're, you're, you have a small site and you're fitting a large building. Um, you're asking for a, um, uh, an FAR variance as well. Um, we're trying to maximize this site. I have concerns, as I mentioned, this type of architecture. Uh, I don't like, you know, of, uh, parking on the infrastructure, and I know it's about cost, uh, but you have to understand this building will be here for the next fifty to hundred years, and we're gonna have to live with this. So we'll make sure that whatever happens on Marble Dell is gonna, uh, it's, uh, gonna be nice and, uh, attractive uh, for, for us for the next fifty to a hundred years. Um, this rendering, as I mentioned, is better than the original, uh, uh, rendering, but however, you know, I still, you know, uh, still have concerns about this building. Uh, you're only showing one column in the corner there. I'm sure there'll be multiple columns, uh, throughout the space. I have a concern about the, uh, the potential darkness in the corner. I recognize it's working pretty high. Um, so again, you're, you're maximizing, you're really fitting. So again, you're maximizing, you're really fitting a massive building on a small site. So I have expressed my concerns at the workshop. I'm going to reemphasize them again.
Okay. I mean, certainly we're entitled to even put up a five-story building here. We're not trying to maximize the property as much as possible. We're not going for major variances. And actually to discuss with the zoning board, if we, if I need to reduce it by a few, you know, it's a very minor FAR variance that we're looking at right now, I certainly can eliminate that without any problem. But the problem is, it is a tight property and it does fit in with what's happened in the past in this, in these areas. And yes, we're trying to improve it and we're trying to do whatever we can right now with it. And certainly by, you know, right now, this is the parking area where we were saying we have benches out here and then benches inside. We certainly can create more streetscape area over here, but we can eliminate one parking space. And there are certainly be enough room for meters in this area over here and over here. So like I said, we'd be adding meters to the site, at least two meters to the site, not taking away meters.
So I think. Show that, plan that out.
I will plan that out. I will plan that out for you, absolutely. Since it's been brought up, I didn't, I should have brought that in. Also in terms, we don't know what type of streetlights that are going to be occurring and right now, it means that we're all across the street right now as planned, the street lighting. So I don't know if that's going to remain that way. We are putting lights on the building itself. So that we don't have a dark building and a dark street area. So we are trying to improve the area.
And this is, this is more of a question, I think, for the zoning board than the planning board. But, you know, just as part of the variance process, would you be willing to consider an alternative that had a kind of a bigger setback in the front yard? Is that something that would be possible? I know that there's a big slope in the back, you know, so it'd be difficult to push the building back.
It's almost, well, we're close to the setback on one corner. It's not a square rectangular building lot. So it's tight right now on that one corner. It's not quite tight, but it's close enough and it is very steep over there. There's a lot of rocked out croppings there. The back of the building will be used as a retaining wall. This back section back there will be part of a retaining wall system. So that's part of the first floor, the whole basement area. That's also one of the reasons for the extra height because we know we're going to need to have, you know, support that building in the back.
I guess I'm just saying, because, you know, if you had an extra five feet, you would be able to put in some kind of landscaping. And you can't really, there's not enough space to support trees with five feet or, you know, obviously everything is implanted. But if you had a couple of extra feet, you might be able to put in something a little bit more substantial.
Well, certainly, the extra that we're adding here, we can certainly put trees in the area here. And once again, we didn't necessarily want to block off there. But once again, if I can remove the one parking space, have one less parking space, which I think is fair since we will be able to add meters here. And we're not going to be using the first floor, you know, there's certainly not going to need parking for the people there. It'll definitely be just for our employees up here and whoever's going to be renting up here. So we can work something out. I'll discuss it moving back a little bit with the owner, but I know he's trying to maximize, obviously everybody else wants to maximize their property. And so we can easily bring it back down for the FAR. That's not an issue. I've already discussed that with the owner and I think he's agreed to that at this point. So we certainly can add more landscaping to this property. Of course, keep in mind what we have across the street right now, which is what we're going to talk about next.
So to reduce the FAR, what would you do to do that?
Actually, what I would do is actually either taking a foot off the side of the building here, which is all I would need, or bring this back another foot or so over here in the front. It's not, as I said, it's minimal amount that we're over right now in terms of FAR. It's like 0.1. I think the FAR is 1.6. We're at 1.72 or 1.73. So it's not, it's not a large variance that we're looking for on that. And certainly can be accommodated by reducing the building without any ill effect. Does anyone else on the planning board have any questions to this applicant?
At this point.
Oh, I think, Antonio, as we discussed in the question too, it all ties into the master plan for the development of this street. And like you said, it's going to be here a long time. So I think very valid concerns you brought up and I think we just had to really address them. And, you know, I do like the additional height parking area and the opportunity with all the different types of lighting today, LEDs to make this really bright if it does go in this direction. It's a very key component. You can't have that dark element like we saw in your example of the TD Bank. It just is not inviting. And I think it's, you know, these are, these are very good concerns that you brought up. And again, tie them into the master plan.
Nancy, any questions?
No, I think you brought up some very good points. So no, I don't have any questions.
Zana, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any question.
All right, so at this point, this is for, only you're in front of the variances.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, 181 Marbledale.
Let me switch screens for us a minute.
So Antonio, on this one, I think with Bill, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no variances needed?
That's correct.
However, the publication didn't get in the paper, so the notice didn't go out, so we can't open the public hearing anyway. Is that correct, Bill?
Gary, that one's still up for debate, but I'll, I'll leave it up to you at this point. There was no notice as per our requirements on our applications.
So Antonio, I think this is going to last more than a month. I don't see anyone else in the room that, from the public. So probably open the public hearing next, next time I think would be the prudent thing to do if you agree.
What we're looking to do, if I may proceed then, so everybody gets more of an idea of what we're planning on. This is, once again, Marbledale Road. The previous application was right over here, right across the street on the diagonal a little bit. This is behind the buildings. This area had been raised up with retaining walls and here's all along this area here. This has all been made level. This wasn't a steep drop before. It's now presently being used as a parking lot, I'll show the photographs. Parking and storage area. Proposed building over here is going to be a metal building put up on top of a concrete base. I have better drawings to show you as well for that because we've gone to that and I've listened to what you had to say in terms of looks and trying to make it a better building, which we do want to. Indicating the loading zones over here for over here loading and the truck loading zone over here as well. And we have created also an additional five-foot buffer at the end over here. So we'll create, trying to create as much as we can as buffer zones wrapping around the property over here, which meets within your codes in terms of the amount of buffer required. I have that now. And we also added two handicap parking spaces over here for access for people to use for the property. The additional parking spaces would be going back once again to Rocco where he'd be using for his storage of cars and trucks that he has right now that he does now. Building itself, we're talking about having a, we switched this to an elevator instead of a dumbwaiter, since that was a question. It is potentially, we're still negotiating with Martin's Bakery and that would have to go before for a special use permit if we do that. And right now, they're looking at creating their main kitchens here, having a staircase going up, an emergency stair in the back over here, handicap accessible bathrooms on the first floor area and storage areas in both directions. So packing shipping out one way and small area here. Whichever company is going to be using this at this time, we're not sure of the exact use at this point. Certainly it's not designed to have tractor trailers coming in here and delivering. It would be basically just box trucks and vans that would come to deliver any goods and materials here. The second floor is the two-story subject project, would have offices right now in the front and basically storage on the rest of the second floor. That is where we are right now in terms of proposal. On the building itself, we're going to go with a faux, it would be a faux finished stone on terms of the base because we want to have a solid base up to the first floor, which would also be 12 foot from the floor to the ceiling. So it would be a 12-foot ceiling in here. And then having a nine-foot and then a taller ceiling up in the area over here. This once again would be a metal roof, a metal system over here. Additional entries over here. We have solid awnings coming in. And I'd actually like to, so in terms of section wise, what we're doing here, if this becomes the bakery or whichever it becomes or if we have an elevator or dumbwaiter in here, right now I think we decided on the elevator is being the most sensible way to go. We did check on the cost. It's not that much difference in terms of cost at this point. So it will be elevator going into the building at this point. We go to some photographs and some renderings. Okay, now, by see the rendering now? And so basically the existing parking lot right now, I'll bring the photographs out next. But we're just planning on doing a simple, clean building behind the existing auto repair shop. Lots itself would be adding plantings along the strip and around the back area over here. So we'll have some plantings and greenery over here. Greens separate the two. And so once again, this is more of an industrial type of building, but we're trying to make it look a little bit better. And it is in the back of the lot once again. This is not on Marbledale itself and probably won't be very visible at all from Marbledale Avenue. So we don't think that's going to be a visibility problem. Looking down on the site. And looking across, we bring the photos in next. Of what the existing lot is. Okay, this would be the entrance to the area. I'm sorry, this is one side entrance between the two buildings. Our building would be running across between, from the end of this one to about the middle of this building. And there is an entryway from here for additional entries over here. Looking north up the street and across the street. We have the upholstery places. Once again, we're in the same location as the other area. Our entry would be over here between brewery and Rocco's current space right now. This is the width of the area right now. So we'll be coming up this area. Can I ask a question before you proceed? Yes.
You indicated on the right side as an additional entry point, correct? But that's a separate property according to your.
It's owned by Rocco and it's one owner and he wants to have that exit entrance in there for his own purposes. If it doesn't become a bakery, he may be using that for storing cars and having access from both directions.
I know, but if. Still that property, then we have an issue.
Okay.
I think each property needs to stand alone.
Unless he merges the lots?
Yeah, he merges the lot.
Okay, we can discuss that with him. This is the existing, this is Rocco's right now, the main area. This would be our entry over here. He could also probably give an easement on the property over there as well.
Yeah, I was going to mention that. You could do a cross-access easement.
I don't think he has to necessarily give the lot up in terms of that as a separate lot.
But if there was an easement, it couldn't be used for parking, obviously.
No, it would be using this for this building. We can only enter into the building. It doesn't go any further into the lot. We'll go back to the plan for a second. But this is the area right now that we're talking about. Back hill, we have, once again, this is about 50, 60 feet high hill in the background. So we're not on top of that. We're not going to be well above that. People aren't going to be looking straight across into the building. This is the brewery over here and the property that we're talking about is right over here in this area. There's another view of it. So you can see driving up through here. And then we still have our parking areas on both sides in the corners and the new building over here. This is the alleyway that we're talking about that is accessed right now. Right now, there is a gate through, so he does actually go through here. But once the building's up there, the only place he'd be able to go is into the new building. So they could create an easement to go through that. And this is just looking up north across the street right here. And this is looking south is the brewery over here. Get a little bit more. This is the other building that we were talking about for the Elite Properties, which on Seminera is right here. Up for questions? I just want to go back to the site plan for a minute, take a little look at that.
Len, what's going to happen to the existing Mars, the old building which was Marciano's to the north of Rocco? Anything?
This building? Right now, he has no plans for this building. He's using it right now for storing cars. Usually, actually kind of nice cars in there actually. There's a couple of them there I'd like to buy. There's a nice little 67 Austin Haley. That's kind of cool. Along with a nice truck in there. 74 Ford truck. But anyway, he has some nice cars in here right now. I don't know what his plan is. I mean, it was hurts for a short period of time. But once again, they will not have that anymore. The entry that we were talking about would be coming into the building over here. And once again, this would be planting over here between the buildings. So we're not looking for.
Len, is the, is the, is the scale still to the north of Rocco between that and Marciano's old buildings? Is the scale still there?
The one over here?
Scale right off Marbledale Road so they could weigh the coal trucks. As you go north of Rocco, that alleyway. There was a scale in there to weigh the coal trucks when they were still delivering coal.
Okay. That's before my time.
Not mine, I'm sorry to say.
When you're looking at this plan, the entrance to the proposed building is between the two existing buildings. Is that what you're saying?
This would be that additional entrance would be over here.
Okay.
Is what he would. Just being access once again, he's just not sure what's going to happen, you know. We don't have a definite plan. He just wants to put the building up. He feels he can have different tenants in here. He just feels it's a good opportunity right now to build this.
Right. And then in the loading zone area, the lower port where it says loading zone, right now you can enter the building there and the idea is pedestrians will walk through that driveway to get to the building.
Correct. That's the plan right now because we feel you are going to have trucks coming in. They're going to need to come in. So to start having the trucks turning and creating problems, I think with the parking over here, I think could be an issue. So we didn't want to put any parking in front of the building itself.
Now, is there any requirement in that road? I mean, that driveway to, like, whether it's lined off where a pedestrian area to walk? So people aren't getting, you know, car turns into that driveway and somebody's walking? I don't know. Thinking out loud.
Okay, well, I'll look at that. I'll take a look, make sure the width wise that we have room for that. If that works, we can certainly add, we have no problem putting a pedestrian walkway over here.
Yeah, we had talked about putting sidewalk in front of the entrance there, just kind of protect it. I know you did the loading zone, but I'm assuming it's going to be stripped, right? Not, you're not doing anything else there, right?
No, that'll be stripped. Nothing's, we don't want that, you know, there's no permanent parking here. The entrance to the building's over here in this corner over here.
And my concern is somebody walking out of the building, you know, and there's nothing protecting that person. That's the only thing. So I don't know if, to this point, if you're, if you can run a small sidewalk from the Rocco's left building down to our building so that pedestrians can.
Certainly. We'll certainly look into that, checking the dimensions. I'll verify the distance we have for this area over here where the driveway is. If we have room, absolutely. I think it's a great idea to have a pedestrian walkway over here.
Right. And just out of curiosity, the entire parking lot's going to be asphalted, right? Not going to be? What kind of material are you using for the, for the parking lot?
At this point, I believe we will be going asphalt at this point. I mean, right now it's rock because he's, yeah, doing, originally this was a car wash that was approved. And the building was actually being cut in the front over here and we're bringing the building back to here.
I recall that.
Is the original approved plan. But right now, he just felt that the car wash was not going to work. He was doing it for his family, for his kids to be taking over part of the business and that's not happening anymore. They've gone to college and they have gone to bigger and better things, which is actually really great for them.
Hey, I have a question regarding use. Currently, this facility, I got the mechanic shop, right? And so what use is get associated with the new building? And so what use is got associated with the new building?
Right now, as I said, right now we're negotiating with Martin's Bakery because they really feel they would like to have a big space and. And that's what we're looking at, we're doing right now. So it would be light industrial is what we're looking for that building to be made. And that's why we have the 12 foot high walls on the, you know, concrete wall so that if there are trucks that nothing can get through the building, he likes, he wants to make sure it's safe. It's not going to get banged up. And just maintain a safe space for everybody. A quiet space. So if he doesn't get that, he will probably look for some other light industrial use. He may go into car storage. I don't know. Right now, I guess he's storing a lot of cars here. He always gets people asking for storage of vehicles. So that's not his plan right now. He's much rather have the. Another entity there that he, so he can collect rent instead of having to maintain more himself. I think his hands are pretty tied up these days. He's very busy. So I think he'd rather be a landlord for a change.
Alright, in one of these. Also put some ballers by the garage doors.
Sure.
Can we go back to the renderings? Does anybody have any questions before we leave the plant?
Just a quick question. Are the parking spaces going to be used by the proposed new building or the building and the existing building?
New building would be parking, this area here would be going for the new building here right here. And then he would have additional parking over here, another additional 16 spaces for himself to use for Rocco to use.
And the number of spaces, I guess, okay, so it's eight spaces, I understand.
We have, we have a total of 10 spaces here, 10 over here on this space. More than enough for what he needs, especially since even now a lot of his employees. Do not take cars. They don't drive. Most of them do take buses and trains. To get to work right now. He'll be using the same employees that he has now over on Fisher. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That is assuming Martin's takes this building. That is assuming.
Yes, that is assuming Martin's take the building, yes. But once again, once they come, then we do need a special use variance for them to come in to do that, I believe. Am I correct on that, Bill?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, if Martin's comes in, they're going to have to come before the planning board also.
And then they would describe their trucks and how often they come and what times they come in terms of use that space.
Alright. Anybody else have any questions on the, on the site plan?
Good, thank you.
No, thank you.
Len, on the site plan, you indicate these darkened triangles as entrance point. Can you put them on the rest of the entrances as well?
Certainly.
Exactly, I'm on mark. Okay. Go to the plan, please.
Want to go back to the renderings?
Building plan.
Oh, the building plan?
Yeah. Alright.
I do have them over here.
I see, okay.
But we have added, when we were doing renderings that we have added awnings, you know, permanents actually, you know, covered roof areas for the entrances over here for the two. Areas here and for the areas over here. Let's go back to the renderings. We modified. That over here. So you can see them over here. It's the awnings that we added over here. This helps break up the building and the facade. And using the faux finished stone on the concrete will work really well for this and really. Makes a building more than just an industrial building. Like the Elite building, what we have across the street, which is another metal building, same type of material, same metal type of building there. I could bring that up if you want a photograph of that. Does that help? Do you need to see that or not?
I've seen it, so. Put it up for the new member.
Where was that in there? The lead building. I got, I had it somewhere else. I mean, or I had, I had it in a. I gotta find that one. 72, I know. Just give me one second. I'm sorry. I have to actually sort today. That's why I was looking back at it. And that was in my pause and play folder. Plus a board meeting? I could find it over here. Right here is the Elite. Can you see that? This is the Elite building over here right now. So it is, this is right on Marble Dale. It's right next to. Fleetwood Collision. Up the other block over there is also another metal building, very similar to this for. La senti landscaping. There's another metal building like that right up the block on Jackson. So. Needed that. And going back to the renderings. And we'll get, we'll get the buildings up. So we're talking about the awnings covering this. It'll help break up the building, passing. Just then, once again, he really feels that if he does have any sort of light industrial work here, that there will be trucks and he wants to make sure that he has solid. Walls wrapping around the whole base of the building and then putting the metal frame building up above.
Hey, Len, get a cooler color scheme as well.
I think we'll change the color of the tape over here. You want a different?
Oh, just, just to look at, you know.
I will get you more of a color schemes, yes.
And materials as well?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Drainage been taken in consideration for this project?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Has drainage been considered for this project?
We have thought about drainage and we do have the land underneath for here and there's also the new sewer line that's going in. I believe this, in fact, maybe a sewer line coming along Marble Dale. So we will work out drainage systems for onsite drainage as well for the parking lot areas, but that will be engineered. That's, that's later on.
Okay, fine.
Alright, so look at, look at a cooler color scheme. And you might want to put some fancy, rather than fancy cars, some. Box containers and trucks in your rendering.
Okay. Right here.
A quick question.
At the, here's the vans. It's actually the type of van they use now. That's why that's there.
Is there a fence going to be like that, like the, in the sprint ring?
We are going to put some sort of a railing wraparound here to make it look a little bit nicer. Yes, that's the plan.
In the back, on the side?
Over here and the side here. Over here, this is a mistake. That's supposed to be the building over here next to, that's the brewery. So we got to get that building in there. The building comes in next. Just trying to get you some idea of what the building's looking like, so you understand what we're trying to accomplish. This was a quick, put together, we're still working on it. Work in progress.
Alright. The window on the top, right above the garage door, it's low for a reason. What's, what's your plan there?
This one here, Tom?
No, no, on the left elevation.
Yep.
So go up. What is, why is it, what's on?
We were looking at some possibility of some work over here. At one point they were looking at possibly doing a long door in there and besides just put a small window to break up the elevation of it.
Plans reflect the.
Yeah, we're, as I said, we're going back and forth on a couple of different items on this because at one point we had a, like a door up here, like a barn area where you can. Hold, you know, raise things up and go directly into the building. So it's been back and forth and whether we do a door over here or window and door. So we're just going through that right now. We're going to finalize what we want to do with that.
I have another question. You see what in this rendering, where that beige van is with the white car?
This one?
No, on front entrance. Those two, right? By where that van is, I believe there's a garage door there. Is that, is that correct?
I.
Yes, there is a garage door there.
Like I said, we didn't fill out, this doesn't, this isn't a railing either. This should be a building over here. So this isn't, we haven't analyzed this story yet.
Oh, I, I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm saying is if there's a garage door that's going to come right into the path of the. Of that new entrance, that's potential.
Well, it's something that exists now. It's been like that for quite a while.
I know we have a building where potentially another 20 cars are going to be going in and out all day. And it looks like a potential for a. An accident to happen there. So just look at that, please.
That's where the sidewalk's going through the pedestrian sidewalk.
Well, I. Which will help, which will help resolve some of those issues because there are garage doors on. Areas, but we can certainly have caution signs over here and certainly when they open the door, they're not going to just hopefully not barrel out. So let's. That we have to confirm.
You have photographs?
Photograph of that, yep. Let's go to the photographs on that. Nope, wrong ones. I got this up, sorry.
There it is. You just passed it.
It's right here. Actually, we don't have that building set right at this point. I have to really redraw the building. You're talking about this door over here, which is stepped back in. One, we will put the full modeling on this over here. That's the other one. I'm sorry. That's the other door. This is the door you're referring to.
Yeah, that's such a big door.
If I have a better shot of it, hold on.
I'll go back, go back.
I want to see if I have a better shot going up the alleyway with the door.
You do, go back, you passed it. Stop.
Right here. This is the door right here you're referring to.
Correct, right. Yeah, on the left side, he's got, I know he's got like trash container. Where are you putting all that?
Those will go back. We're hoping to put those back in the parking lot area itself. So if I, if I, if I do create a pedestrian way over here. The garbage certainly can't remain over here. It's going to have to go in the back. We'll have to locate a spot within the parking lot area for the trash.
And looking at this, it looks like you have plenty of room for.
Yeah, there should be plenty. Right now this is all closed off, but we need to, I want to measure this 100%, check the survey again. And then if I can get that walkway over here, it certainly makes a lot of sense and it'll give a little bit of extra protection for that garage door.
Alright. And can we make sure the model's correct? Because right now it's not.
Yes. Well, as I said, we'll, we'll update it.
Just a quick question. I'm, I'm just looking at the, just the Google street view. And in the street view, it doesn't show the garage door in the back there. Was that something that was added recently?
The, which.
You were just, just. Yeah.
Oh, he got a permit to put that garage door in about a year ago.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that explains it.
Any plan, Len, are there any plans to. Put a little bit of lipstick on this particular building?
Not at this moment. Not at this moment.
A nice opportunity to all that work now.
We'll talk to Rocco.
See what he says. We'll give him, you know. It'll be a little.
I'd like to at least clean it up so it matches the other building next door. He did a nice job at least just cleaning that. It looks better than it ever did before. So even brush by a little paint would certainly make a difference here.
Something. See if he's.
I'll discuss that with him if he's amenable to doing something like that, just so it matches up also.
In the scheme of things, it's probably nothing in the scheme of this project.
Yes.
Alright, anybody have any questions?
None here, thank you.
Dave?
No, I'm good.
None here. None here.
Alright. Alright, so we'll make these corrections. We'll see you next month.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Too.
That's, I think, business. We'll make a motion to close the meeting. Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, good night, everybody.